I'm going to call this hopefully final meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors for 2022 to order with a invocation from Pastor Bob Pete along with Pledge of Allegiance.
Before I give the invocation, if I may, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for serving so well. May we pray. Dear God, Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessing you give us. We invite you to preside over this meeting today. Even if we have differing opinions, please give us the unity of spirit. Help us to listen to each other politely as we share our viewpoints. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than individuals. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together in our shared mission. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7. A motion and action to call for an executive session to be held January 3, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with Aster.
So made.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Official business to come before the board. A discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Esperon.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Committee or legislative reports. Supervisor Bishop.
I have nothing to report today, thank you.
Supervisor Angus.
Nothing this morning, thank you.
Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. For those in the Kingman area that have been following the INA irrigation, non-expansionary process, by statute, the Arizona Department of Water Resources has until the 12th of December to make their determination as to whether or not to designate the Walupi Valley groundwater basin as an INA. If they do that, it will be the first INA that has been designated in this state in 40 years. So we're watching every day for notice one way or the other. That's really all I have this morning, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. County managers report.
Good morning, Chairman. No report today, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Call to the public. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.01H, a public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion or legal action. Kenny Workes. And Scotty McClure is on deck.
Kenny Workes, Yucca, Arizona. The new Criterion, the editor is Roger Kimball. I want to quote a paragraph. I wish I knew. I remember G.K. Chesterton's counseling remark that "an adventure is only an inconvenience rightly considered." An inconvenience is only an adventure wrongly considered. But I also remember Michael Oakeshott's warning about how ancient enormities are revived in modern forms and given false names in an effort to make them acceptable. I would like to start off our new year, if we can, with some sort of access to our neighboring county, where so much of what goes on in our county is impacted by them. I'd like to be able to go to the state legislature meetings, the Maricopa County Supervisor meetings, and the Phoenix City Council meetings and have a presence there to let them know that what they do there affects us as well, and we're going to have a presence there. I'd like to start off the new year somehow with some sort of means provided by the county to for us to go down there and have a presence there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Scotty McClure. Krista Hunter on deck.
I bought an amplifier at Walmart, less than $16 with tax, for my TV. You know, you guys have had problems, people griping about not paying their taxes for something they're not getting. This solved a lot of my problems for $16. Plug it in the back of my TV, and most of my freezing and stuff like that went away. Most of it. You know, I mean, we're microwaving it all the way on different towers here, so that's not gonna... Anyway, I was talking to a guy at Webcom. He calls me to see what's going on in Bullhead when they're having this outing because he knows I'm watching the TV. They have come up with an amplifier that they'd like to be able to sell, but he's afraid it would be a conflict of interest because you guys hire him, and here they're out, you know, and he's the one up doing the tower, you know, and tweaking it so he could sell these amplifiers. So he's afraid of a conflict of interest. I don't think he knows that I'm doing this today, but he could sell these all over the United States. But it would... These people that are down in these gullies and stuff out there that are still not getting signal, this might fix it, but he's afraid of a conflict of interest. Now, that's... Those guys over there need to figure this out if they can do this. These newspapers that got bought out, Lake Havasu and Parker, Wickenburg, I believe, and Hildy, you know, our paper, how screwed up that jackass Mike Boyd has ruined our newspapers. That's talking about California Needles and Laughlin Paper, Nevada. So we're talking tri-state big time. MSNBC has sent in a guy to take over all of them. He's gonna be the head guy, and he's already here, and he's already fired Larry Kendricks. MSNBC has come in here and bought up every newspaper except the minor and the white sheet. This is bullshit, to put it point-blankly, that's the word I'm gonna use, that these cowards have come in here and taken over our newspapers. I remember newspapers in the 50s and 60s. I grew up on them, and you know I complain about the library newspapers. I want this investigated. I think BIGS and GOESAR, you know, our people in Washington, need to go to the FTC or whoever manages it. This is... They... I remember Ma Bell getting broken up because they got too big. These people that come in here, I want this investigated FTC level or back in Washington, D.C. somehow. This is not right. They should have to sell, like break up their newspapers again. They shouldn't be able to buy all three main newspapers and all their little newspapers. This needs to go to BIGS and GOESAR. You guys don't have any right to tell the newspapers what to do, you know, unless you write a letter. But this just really bugs me that MSNBC has taken over our county. The Republican Party can't get off their ass and do something to help.
Thank you, sir. Krista Hunter.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Supervisor. My name is Krista Hunter. I'm here on behalf of Kristen Leitz from Leitz's raised funeral home, was unable to be here due to medical appointments in Vegas. I'm here to let you know that we still have yet to receive the names of the 34 bodies in question off the document provided by the Health Director at the last board meeting on November 21. He stated at the meeting he would be able to provide those names either that afternoon and next morning. However, he did provide us with some documentation, which is from the Health Department, and the names he had are the same as ours, showing that the ME numbers are still wrong. We explained the numbers to the ME office, provided needed to come from their office with the names, and at this time, the information is just not coming. This is simple, since they provided a report with numbers of cases to the funeral homes, they should provide the names that go along with those. Also, the funeral home case stats that are available on the public site of the ME website, which are inaccurate, are only allowed and to be available to the funeral homes per their personal logins. So that needs to be addressed as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a presentation from the Arizona Commerce Authority.
I want to introduce Ramsey Wharton with Arizona Commerce Authority through the Film and Digital Media Department. They have... She's a program manager for them, and they have made strides in really helping to bring the film industry into the state, and they're expanding, and I want her to be able to present what she's doing right now. So thank you.
Good morning. How are you all? Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and sort of give you an update on what we're doing through the Commerce Authority. Some of you may be already aware of the activities of, basically, people will refer to us as the State Film Office or the State Film Commission. And we're out and about, now in Mojave County, been working closely with Tammy and the team and a lot of the cities and towns here to kind of get you ready for what we call a film-ready community. So just a quick brief, if you don't know, we were reestablished under the Commerce Authority in December of 2016. So back in 2010, the State Film Office lapsed, along with the sunsetting of the tax credits at the time, and sort of the poles were put in the ground for certain jurisdictions that were able to maintain their current ongoing film activities. Of course, Arizona has a very long and rich history. Communities like Tucson and Flagstaff and Phoenix, they kind of held the torch. Prescott, other communities, Kingman, they are... Lake Havasu, they were still working very hard to kind of keep the attraction efforts going. So Director Matthew Earl Jones sends his regrets. He's unable to attend today, and I am the program manager. We also are certified by a group called the Association of Film Commissioners International, AFCI. So we technically represent the state as the State Film Commission. Our job, promote Arizona as a top film destination. We are surrounded by other beautiful states. We have terrific weather, the most diverse climate. We think we have the best assets to offer, the best communities, the best professionals, and we want to have them here. And the economic impact of those projects can be quite fruitful. So we work twofold in the economic development side and in the workforce development side. Economic development really is at the heart of the communities. How do we attract? How do we make our communities film-ready? Local governments, making them aware of activities. What are the processes that we run through? Locations? Where are the people that can support these activities when the calls come in and the emails come in? We work to do business attraction and expansion. We might have businesses and people sitting in the audience today that have local companies, whether it's construction or maybe a videography company. They actually either work in the industry or they support it. Hotels, restaurants, rental car companies, you know, Bobby Jean, who owns the hair salon, she can do hair, makeup, people that have antiques, collections can be used. But we don't know where they are unless we know where they are. And that's where where the outreach really comes in, in identifying businesses that can grow. So, the support part is very, very important in this presentation. When a production has decided that they want Arizona, or let's say they're bidding between Arizona and a location in Utah for a commercial activity, and we do a variety of different film and digital media projects, everything from a student project, a young kid putting on his first short film, all the way up to the big studio projects, and in between, you have very lucrative commercial projects and photo shoots and your Chevy truck commercials. You have independent films that go on and make their mark in film festivals. So, a really big window, categories of genres of activities. And when those calls come in, we help them find the permitting. They might say, "I need a red barn with this look out in the middle. I don't care where it is across the state. Show me what you have," and that will have me putting information out to all my counties, to our contacts, and like, "Hey, help me. What do we have? Let's get this project here." So, we do a lot of that work to network out the state so that when the calls come in, that they land in Arizona, that they don't take that million-dollar project and go next door. And in fact, Mojave County is well-positioned because of your proximity, right next to California. It does allow less money to be spent instead of them going to New Mexico, going up to Utah. We like to say that that's one of our value propositions that we have, the proximity to California. So, that's the economic development side of things. On the workforce development, this is even more critical. Like many of our industries and sectors, we have aging-out crew, we have new technologies coming in, and we have to prepare the workforce, and we start right in the, in the high schools. Whether it's theater and the entertainment industry with somebody just getting used to being up on stage, to the kids that are learning how to make props and, and run the screens on the theatrical side, to the, the young students that are putting on news broadcasts and filming, up into the community colleges where they're learning how to edit on new technology, learning how to handle equipment. If any of you have seen The Mandalorian or any of these high-profile where they're putting video walls together now, the technology is there, not only in trying to find facilities that can integrate it, and we can attract those here to Arizona, but to have the kind of workforce of people that can do the work. So, whether it's behind the camera, mostly, your cameraman who's setting up the lighting, who's building those sets. If you're in construction and you work that as your main job, you can build a set on a movie. If you're an electrician, you could be hired to work on a movie set that comes to town. But without us educating the population, without us working with economic development teams across the state, reaching out, I'm doing a community meeting today to try to attract some of the local businesses in to talk to them about this, our message can't be heard. So, it's really important. So, we right now are working on a training mission, a training program, and we call it Crew Up Arizona. We have five community colleges with active film and digital media programs dedicated to hosting two training sessions on their campuses, our program, twice a year, try to graduate 40 students out of each. So, by the end, it's a five-year program. We're pumping in 2,000 new workers in this field. So, one of the things we want to think about long-term here within the county is, where are we with our development in that area? Something we'll take a look at and, and work to help you grow, and what cities are doing more of that activity across the county. So, when they graduate, we actually then turn around and promote them. We add them to our statewide database and say, "Hey, we have local crew here." So, when that call comes in, you don't have to pull a crew from Los Angeles or Vegas. We want you to hire local, because that's what keeps them here. They don't have to graduate and go to LA, and that's what we're trying to do. Build up the infrastructure here so that they have a place to stay, live in the towns they want to live in, enjoy the quality of life that Arizona has, and keep them here. If you're not familiar with some of the program tools that we use, that database, we call the Arizona Production Directory. It's online, it's available to the public right now, and it manages three sections of the industry: the crew, the people that actually work behind the camera on set, lots of different positions; the talent, all the people that want to be extras. You all could be extras in a movie, in fact, because it's really about getting the communities involved. Otherwise, they're bringing in other people from outside. We've, we've done lots of projects. We had a production in Bisbee, and it was a documentary, a react, reenactment, a historical-based piece. The whole town came out. They organized meetings and wardrobe came in, and they outfitted everybody. It was like an 1800s documentary. It was fantastic. And that's just an example of some of the activities. Recently, HBO Max came in down to Tucson, maybe, perhaps you heard about this. This was a big deal. They shot a pilot, a TV pilot, and they wanted to do it based on 1970s look, a phoenix. Well, Tucson kind of looks like that. So, they went down there, they made it happen, and in a four-month span, I believe, they spent in excess of $10 million in that community alone. All the hotels, I mean, the city hall was, they, they modified a government building, the, the city hall, I believe it was, like the second floor, turned it into an FBI headquarters. I mean, it was, it was amazing what, what was happening. And so, we're, we're waiting to find out if they're gonna continue to stay in Arizona or come back at some point. So, the Production Directory, that supports services there, that's all the businesses that support activities. People can come in there. They can put up their property. They can say, "We'll allow filming in our restaurant." In fact, we have a catering service, and you can hire us out as well. Film offices and film resource coordinators, those are all our points of contact that we deal with. So, when somebody wants to film in Bullhead City, I have somebody to call, Chloride, wherever in the county that they want to go. I have to find out who's there, and are they still there? Because, you know, in government, there's a lot of turnover, so we do have to keep on top of that. Locations database, self-explanatory, taking pictures of these awesome places that you all have, from the cute little restaurants and the colorful Route 66, making sure that those are options for commercial photo shoots, any number of productions that are telling a story that would reflect that. And providing production resources. What do we, what do we tell them about filming in Arizona? What are the laws for using animals on set or hiring minors or any number of things? So, we provide all of that activity. What makes a community attractive? That's our job out here, is to help inform you. Having a variety of film locations, and again, we're working with county economic development and the various cities and towns to help identify these places and get them available so the production companies can see those in our database. You Do You, I put that in there for a reason. Some of you might be familiar with that. That's a campaign slogan for a casino. And the You Do You means that we don't need you to change the look one bit of any of the places in beautiful Mojave County, because there's something for everyone. If you change it, that's not really you. From, from the places that you might find or blights in your community, you need that. Think about the movies that you've watched. You need landfills, you need lots of different locations, to high-end mansions and big properties, ranches, all types of things. So, we want a variety. Support services, all those businesses and goods and services, we need to know where they are, who can help, who's worked in the industry. Being a attractive community, most of our counties have low or no-fee permits. Permitting, as many things in business, is an attraction tool. So, does a community offer a reasonable permit or no, nothing at all? Like, Pima County doesn't have any, I believe, or a low permitting fee. Or are they gonna be hit with a lot of permits? How are we managing those activities? That's part of figuring out what's working for us and what's not working for us, as we evaluate different processes, what's the flow of work when it comes to permitting in a community. And what's the process for, process for film? Streamlined or not? Do we have a one-stop-shop? Do we have a local film office? Or what we might call a quasi-film office, a, a point person, somebody that might be dedicated? They take the calls, they manage the project, they reach out to other departments, and they say, "We have what you need. What do you need?" Okay, they need this? Okay. And they sort of herald that through, and it makes it a lot easier, because we find that in business, as in most things, it's a lot easier when you're not managing a lot of elements. So, it makes it simple. So, those are some of the things that make communities attractive. Hence, our desire to roll out a new program. It's called the Film Ready Communities Program, part of our Film Ready Arizona Initiative. The sponsorship program provides enhanced film commission resources, tools, education, access, support to the communities, and maximize, to maximize the economic impact of this particular sector in the community. So, this is really for those communities and counties who say, "We want to take this to the next level. We want to do this because we can attract, we have great towns, and we know we want to make some good economic impact from it." There's three basic elements for qualifying, obviously. We need a dedicated point of contact from the county, from the cities and towns that are, that are represented. We need them to have a place where their information lives for these activities, for those inquiries on a webpage, whether it's in their economic development page or tourism page. And then we need the people that we can train on these systems to give them access so they can do some of the work that gets the assets of the counties out there in the cities and towns. And at the end of the day, our end goal is to be promoting more of your locations, your businesses, and your workforce that can work in this industry. It's to improve permitting process, streamline, make government more efficient, and improve that speed of business, and that speed of business is very important. Unlike long projects in economic development where you're doing site selection and battling over a course of time, this industry comes in, they dump money, they come out. They come in, they come out, they come in, they come out, when it comes to production work itself, if there's no studio in place or something more longstanding. And in that process, a lot of times, they're bidding competitively on where they're gonna go. Are we gonna take the production to New Mexico? Are we gonna take it to Utah? Are we gonna stay here? Sometimes it's about a location. Can I find that red barn here? Or am I gonna have to go to Utah? I've got three of them there that I can use. But again, the easier it is for me to find those locations or find that information, the faster I can make that call and get that return back on whether or not we could do it, the faster we can land that project. And sometimes, that's really what it comes down to. So, speed of business is very important. And for you all in the county, this improving communication works multiply. Not only does it help when we streamline this and in our program, the Film Ready Communities, we want internally, between the cities and towns, them talking to all their departments. It's no longer Public Works, we need to shut down a road, it's like in a, in a silo, and, and we've got, you know, parks here and somebody else doing something. We really want them all talking. We want the cities and towns talking to the county and letting them know, "Hey, we've got some, some great project coming in. This is what we're doing." So, all of this is coming on the heels of a brand-new tax incentive for film that's set to go into effect in January. So, the Motion Picture Production Program, HB 2156, we at the ACA, the Arizona Commerce Authority, colleagues of mine internally, they are in the rulemaking process right now on this, and this is another large attraction tool. So, we believe that Arizona now is gonna be at a different level. So, now we're getting ready potentially to receive a lot of inquiries and activities, which we have already, about what, what does this mean? So, once those rules get written, the application gets up, you all will be able to see that as well as the public. Having said that, irregardless of those, we need to be ready to promote this industry, to have successful opportunities in our communities and county-wide, and support our business activities and the people who live here. I'm delighted to be able to speak to you today. I hope you get an opportunity to see some of this growth with what we're doing, and we're working very closely, as I said, with economic development, and we think it's gonna be a good thing. So, do you have any questions? Thank you so much.
Questions from the Board Supervisor Bishop.
Ramsey, thank you so much for coming to Mojave County and presenting this. And yeah, I've lived here all of my life, so I just wanted to remind folks that the movie industry is not new to Mojave County.
Exactly.
It's, it's been diminished a little bit over the years, but I want to take you back to 1958, where The Badlanders was filmed in, in this area, and then The Edge of Eternity. I don't know any of you old-timers watch that movie. It's kind of a comical movie, but the Mojave County Sheriff's Office was involved in that. And my husband, as a young deputy, still with his red hair that turned blonde later, he drove one of the deputy cars, and they raced through Dolan Springs and
Wow.
went out on Pierce Ferry Road before Public Works made it a, a safe road to drive on. And then, out at Red Lakes, we had Mars Attack. That was, that was filmed. That was kind of a, a low-budget film, I think, but entertaining. And then, and Chloride.
Oh, I was just there yesterday. I love it. Love it.
Yeah. Chloride has their own little town called Sinide Springs, but Universal Soldier, they used the, the local establishments and used a lot of the residents as extras. And then, um, um, out on the family ranch called The Windmill, Chuck Connors brought his whole movie crew out there and filmed the western movie. And, and then, most recently, we all know Greg Arnold, he's, he's made several little films. The one that I got to be an extra in was called Protocol 734.
There you go.
I went to a film festival. I don't know where it went from there, but we do have a history in Mojave County. So, as a, as a member of the Arizona Commerce Authority, it makes me proud to see that we're doing things in all of Arizona, not just the larger areas.
Right. And I will take a note to say that part of the excitement when we venture out into the community is to be reminded of some of the, the rich history that we do have here, and our, our opportunity to get those productions, to find those films, and put them on our website. So, gofilmaz.com is our, our film program website, and there we highlight some of the productions, but we look forward to doing much more of that. So, I really appreciate that information.
Supervisor Lingfield.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. As Supervisor Bishop mentioned, there has been several movies that have been filmed for many decades here in the Kingman area. I hope there's more. Hopefully, Tammy, as you work with our economic development folks, will take you up to some other areas in my district, District 1, on the Arizona Strip, some incredible landscapes that we have up there. That would be, I've always thought, great for the automotive industry as far as commercials or motorsports or even films. So, hopefully you guys can make that happen, and I think you'll find not only some red barns, but some pretty great places that you may have never seen before.
Thank you. Absolutely. And we're also, I'm gonna be down in Bullhead City tomorrow as well, doing outreach and community presentations. So, I'm really looking forward. You have a beautiful county, and there's no reason why we shouldn't be highlighting and promoting that for this sector, because this is the low-hanging fruit. There's no other sector of business that can touch so many areas, from transportation and hotels and lodging and, and food and retail. It's just, it's there, and so we need to be benefiting from it. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Engle.
Hi, I represent Bullhead City. You just mentioned it, and if you would, tell everybody where this public meeting is going to be.
I think it's at the Administration Building. Tammy, do you? In the Arizona At Work Conference Room.
Okay, and that is, I just want you to be able to tell people who are watching.
Yes, and I apologize. I don't have my, my phone on the location. Tammy?
While Tammy comes down, I don't want people to forget about the box office hit filmed in Lake Havasu Piranha.
Oh, yes. Classic.
Filmed with tax credit dollars from the previous tax credit program, which I voted against, by the way.
That's okay.
But I do, if I'd have known this was coming up, I would have brought my stuff Piranha that I was mockingly presented by another senator when we killed that tax credit. Thank you. Tammy?
So, today at 2:30 in the Arizona At Work Conference, Conference Room, we're having a meeting. But then tomorrow at 10 o'clock in Bullhead City, they're having one at the City Chambers.
At the City Chamber? Okay. And so, I just want to, this was a great presentation. Thank you. But we've already kind of started. We put our foot in, right? All the cities and everybody understands all this. Like, where are you in that process to introduce this to Mojave County?
Well, we've already made contact. We've been working since the, we were reestablished and making our points of contact. We're rolling the program out. We've got Bullhead City, Lake Havasu, already Jackie Leatherman out there mans the film office. It's about getting them trained, having them in our system so that they can upload and add to it what they know in their backyard. So, that access training's already underway. So...
Thank you. You know, we don't have a, a red barn, but we have a little red schoolhouse.
Well, that'll do. You know, you don't know what a production will need.
Right.
You just don't. I mean, there's, so, anything that stands out, anything that's unique, anything that looks like a period piece, or that can double for another location. So, if it looks like it could be in the Middle East, you know, date trees, or maybe yellow leaves in Prescott can double for Connecticut, or, you know, unusual looks. yellow leaves in Prescott can double for Connecticut, or, you know, unusual looks, very, very important because it means they don't have to go.
Got some places that look like Afghanistan also.
You know.
Encouraged by a soldier that had been to Afghanistan. We're good in that way, too.
Right, no, and again, I understand the issues and the debate. At the end of the day, we just want to be able to get some of the dollars in here and kind of make sure that you all are on the map and that we know that you're film-friendly, that you can support in this capacity when a call comes in, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
The consent agenda. Supervisor Bishop, anything to remove from the consent agenda?
No, I don't.
Supervisor Angus.
Can we have a number, I believe it's 36. Yeah, 36.
Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Nothing today, Mr. Chair.
And I want to take a look at 23.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to accept the consent. Item 5 for 42 minus 28.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 23.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tara, I don't see any price schedule on this.
Because we didn't change the prices, it's the existing prices. We're just asking to extend this one. I think it was for two more months. We're negotiating a new contract right now, so when we are ready to award those new contracts, you'll get all of the pricing. I can forward you the current pricing if that would help.
That would be fine.
Okay. Anything else?
Questions for Tara? Thank you, ma'am. Looking for a motion?
Chairman Gould, I'd make a motion to approve. Item 23.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 36, Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. This is about an intergovernmental agreement between Mojave County Juvenile Probation Department and Kingman Academy of Learning. I just, just a very short explanation as to why it's singled out just to this one learning institution.
Good morning, Supervisor Gould, members of the board. Supervisor Angus, this was a grant that was applied for by the Kingman Academy of Learning High School with the Department of Education, so that's the reason why it is specific to that school. They were awarded the grant and then approached the Mojave County Juvenile Court to enter into an agreement to have an officer placed at their high school for this program.
And so, there's going to be a new full-time deputy probation officer for this program?
Supervisor Angus, that's correct. It would be a new position. The position is a 10-month position, working at the Kingman Academy of Learning High School. The other two months would be regular juvenile probation officer duties that would be funded by our department.
And what happens after the year, the 12 months?
Assuming the grant funding was still in place, they would go back to the school when school resumes.
And if not?
I'm sorry.
And if not, if the grant is not renewed?
If the grant was not renewed, then we would lose that position. However, our department, having several vacancies, we would be able to reabsorb that officer into normal operations.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to approve item 36. Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 43 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 43. Anyone here to testify on item 43? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 43.
Motion approved.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 44 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 44. Anyone here to testify on item 44? Anyone here to testify on item 44? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 44.
Motion approved.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 44 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 44. Anyone here to testify on item 44? Anyone here to testify on item 44? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 44.
Motion approved.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 45 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 45. Is anyone here to testify on item 45? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 45.
Motion approved.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 46 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 46. Is anyone here to testify on item 46? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 46.
Chairman Gould, motion to approve.
Second. You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 47 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 47. Anyone here to testify on item 47? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 47.
Chairman Gould, motion to approve. Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
If I may ask Director Walsh to come down just to answer a question I have. Or Scott. Good morning, Scott. Looking through the backup, it says a retail store. But then, looking through the backup, it says it's a, is it a dollar-type store? It's a dollar, a dollar branded type of a store?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, I'm not exactly sure, but I believe that is the case.
Yeah, looking through the plans, I mean, I saw a name, and I won't call out the whole name of the store, but it's a dollar type of an establishment, right? Do you know, in the Kingman area, how many dollar-type stores there are currently?
Supervisor Lingefelter, I'm not aware of how many there are. Well, I do know there are quite a few.
Yeah, I heard in the audience, there is a lot, and I'm not going to be voting in support of this because if you have long-term thinking and you look at the Kingman economy and you look at the research that has been done on dollar stores, and I won't get into all of it, but the more dollar stores that you have, the harder it becomes to get a specialty grocery store like a Sprouts or a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods. And I know that there is a large percentage of people in the Kingman area that would love to see one of those higher-end stores, so I'm not going to be supporting this. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
What's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion? Did we have a motion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have a motion asked.
Okay, you've heard that motion in second.
I'll make a comment before we.
Supervisor Bishop.
So, we do have a large amount of dollar stores in the area, also in the remote areas, and a lot of my constituents find these stores very useful. In this particular case, this is out on Northern, there is one other dollar store, but there is a very large population, and many of these people use public transportation or walk to get their items of grocery or other needs. So, it works for them like a little mini Walmart, and that's the reason that I made the motion to approve this. I think it's needed, and if people didn't shop at these stores, then they wouldn't be bringing more and more out. So, they seem to be making money, and the people that frequent these stores seem to appreciate the convenience, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Supervisor. There's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 47, or, item 48 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 48. We've got a couple of people signed in to speak. John Nicoletti.
Hi, my name is John Nicoletti. Been in town for over 30 years. My wife has a nice speech she wants to give, but I just, I wanted to rename the road just because it wasn't, you know, just because it said Indian Canyon, it was just, I had, I was raised on a road in Northern Wisconsin named Nicoletti Road, and changing the name will only affect one other address that is, and there's nobody living there, but there's only one other address that actually has Indian Canyon Road. There was a gentleman that came in at the last meeting, and he said he opposed it because of, he thought it was going to be, the road name was going to be, and I'm sorry to say this, was going to be Lingerbelter, but that, so he didn't want it, but he had his reasons, I guess. It just, there was 11 letters sent out, there was three opposing. Me and my son and my wife are planning on living there for many years. I've been with the utility company for 20, and my son has been for five, and we plan on being good people of the city of Kingman and the county and all that stuff, and so I, it just make my family and my son proud to just have the road named Nicoletti, and I guess I didn't see it would make any harm, and paid $540 to have this done. There is no sign there now, and there's never been one. This road is only about a half-mile long, and we own 41 acres along it. So, it's, we're just like pride of the name, and we're good people of the community, and would hope that you guys would consider just renaming it, because like I said, 11 letters went out, only three, and that was just only one person that it actually would change their address, and you know, their address would still be, like my address is 3215 Indian Canyon, it'd just change to 3215 Nicoletti Road. I would have put in Nicoletti Canyon or something of that sort, but there's one too many letters for it, so, but if you would, I'd appreciate if you would approve it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
I could just say, I think Nicoletti sounds like a better name for a road than my last name, that's for sure, so.
Marie Nicoletti.
She's cute. I'm going to read this because I'm very shy. So, thank you for taking the opportunity to address our road name proposal. My husband and I were not able to attend the zoning board meeting due to our work schedules, but we did watch a recording of the meeting afterwards. So, as a background, my husband has owned five acres off Indian Canyon Road for 20 years. Recently, we acquired 36 more acres on that property, and there's no street sign, as my husband said, and there's only one other address on Indian Canyon. So, the reason my husband is pursuing this name change is because he was born and raised on Nicoletti Road in Wisconsin, and he's very proud of his last name. I learned that when I married him, and he would like to honor his father and brother, both who lived and died here in Kingman. And during the zoning meeting, one of the commissioners suggested that we were making the proposal because we were offended by the use of the name Indian, and that we were jumping on the Biden administration's bandwagon for changing offensive historical place names, and twice in his comments, this gentleman used the word prejudice. And if nothing else, I want to respond to those comments because they're without merit. Both my husband and I are proud of our nation's history, and we're proud of our own personal family histories, and the direction the leadership of this country has chosen, it does not reflect our beliefs. And so, my daddy raised me to believe, to believe that my name is my reputation and that history is important, and I do not want my name or the name I married to, Mr. Nicoletti, to be associated with any of this. And so, throughout Mojave County, there's many family road names, and I request, and our request is made with a pure intention, and we're not meant to cause any grief to anybody. And so, I respectfully ask that the board of supervisors reconsider the recommendation of the zoning board, and thank you for your time in hearing my comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And John Nicoletti. Do we have another John Nicoletti? No. So, that must be a duplicate, and they're both in favor, strangely enough. Anyone else here to testify on item 48? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 48.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Make a motion to approve item 48.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
I would like to hear from Public Works to find out how changes to this road may cause extra work for different departments, like the 911 Center, the Road Department, Development Services. How complex is this, Mr. Lutowski, for this road to be changed?
Good morning, Chairman Gould, Supervisor Bishop. With regard to our particular road name change, I do not foresee any challenges to Public Works, particularly with the delivery of road maintenance services. That's predicated on whether this road is currently in our maintenance system. I don't have that information in front of me, but even if it was, very hypothetically, it would not necessarily have any impact to our operation. We would just update our electronic records accordingly for the name change.
Okay, is part of this road within the city of Kingman limits?
I do not have the backup.
We're all in the county, and it's just right beside the line.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Bishop, this road is in the county. There's, I believe, a 30-foot right-of-way that is in the county, but there is also a portion of it that is in the city limits, and one of our conditions is that they would have to go through the city's process to rename that portion of the road as well before this would be vested.
Okay, do you foresee any problems with the changing of the 911 system for law enforcement or any other first responders fire department?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Bishop, I do not.
Okay.
Supervisor Bishop, you might want to talk to the assessor who keeps the maps.
Is the assessor here? I didn't.
He tried, though.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Ms. Lutowski. Looking at the forms, I'm curious why we have, it says Mojave County Road Renaming Procedures, and then we have the date accepted, and then we scratched out the payment for renaming, and then payment of was $750. Now, we scratched that out and put $500, and then we've got a plus $40. Is our form not up to date, or?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Johnson, I would defer that to Development Services. I do know at one time, very briefly, the fee was increased to $750 and referred back to the $500 fee. That's the extent. Scott, let's turn to you.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Johnson, it appears that our form is out of date. We do need to update that.
Okay, so the fees that were submitted are the correct fees?
Correct, $500, and then we have a $40 automation fee.
Okay, and the agenda item says deny the adoption. What's the reason for the denial?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Johnson, the reason for denial would be because the commission is recommending denial.
And their reason for denial was?
Their reason for denial was the opposition that was presented. There was three letters of opposition from surrounding property owners out of the 11 letters that were sent out.
Thank you.
Chairman Gould, I have a question of Scott while he's at the podium. How many properties, other than the Nicoletis, will be affected by this road change?
How many properties, other than the Nicoletis, will be affected by this road change?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Bishop, I am not exactly aware. I do know there is one other address that is on that road currently. I believe that would be the only one that would need to change if the, if the road renaming is approved.
Are there vacant properties owned by owners that may develop these later, later? And are these three letters of opposition from those type of owners?
Correct, there's, there's eleven properties that are directly adjacent to this, to this road, property owners, I should say, and three of those are in opposition. And do have the potential to build on, on this street.
Okay, well, I do have concerns if, if, if there are other properties that will have the name change. I would, I would prefer that they be in favor of this road change before I supported it, whether they live there now or plan to live there in the future. I, I think putting someone's family name on a road is, is a good way to honor the family. In fact, my, one of my family members did the same thing, so I, I get it. I just, I don't want to ignore the people that own property there that may not want to, to see this name change go through. So I would, if this fails, I would recommend that the Nicoletis contact these other property owners and, and get their, their buy-in on changing the name of the road. So I'll be voting in opposition.
Supervisor Angus.
Okay, so you'd be voting in opposition of the denial?
Well, I, I will vote in favor of the denial, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I spoke to one of our P and Z guys to ask him why there was a unanimous denial, because we don't usually see that too often. And he said, again, it was the thing that Mr. Nicoletti talked about, about the Indian thing, which really didn't make any sense, but that they were concerned about, sort of it's a vanity kind of thing. And that it would maybe set a precedent that we don't really want to go down. Now, years ago, we had another name change and it was quite controversial, if anybody remembers that. And at that time, we voted to, it was a split board, we voted to approve it. And there were no, as far as I remember, neighbors or neighboring people who were against it. The fact that this one, there are letters in opposition, really gives me pause. And if, like we've done so many times, if, if maybe Mr. Nicoletti can go and talk to some of these neighbors and explain it and, but people, people don't like change like that, their roads being things, they've probably lived there for thirty years and I know this means a lot to you, but I understand the other side as well.
Could I have the motion read again?
The motion was made by Supervisor Lingenfelter simply to approve. Were you, the question here is approve the denial as written or to approve it going through?
Allow me, Chairman Gould, may I clarify?
Supervisor Lingenfelter.
The rec, my motion would be to actually approve the road name change. And the reason I made this motion is, I mean, I get both sides too. And I understand there are public, or excuse me, private property owners that have not built there and, and who knows if they even live in Mojave County or Arizona right now? Maybe they bought it for retirement, who knows what the situation is. The fact is that there's one other family that lives on that road right now. And, and I thought if, if you're gonna make a change like this, better now than maybe down the road when it's all fully built, built out, it's gonna be a lot harder for them to do that. So if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, but I'm gonna support them in doing this.
Do we have a second on that motion, Madam?
No.
So the motion dies for lack of second. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould, I will make a motion that we approve the denial of resolution number twenty-two-two-one-six, second.
You've heard that motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item forty-nine's a public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing on item forty-nine. Anyone here to testify on item forty-nine? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on item forty-nine.
Most approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item fifty is a public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing on item fifty. Anyone here to testify on item fifty? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on item fifty. What's the pleasure of the board?
Most approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second, any further discussion?
I have one question.
Supervisor Bishop.
I didn't see in, in the back-up material, but there was a discussion that there was being unreasonable charge for mattresses. I just want to be sure that that was removed.
Come on down.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Bishop, yes, we did look into the mattress fee at Mojave Valley landfill. It turns out that Republic was charging that in error. They did identify how many people were, paid that via credit card and how many people paid cash. And at this point, we're in the process of, at least those that paid by credit card, getting that refunded and we'll be looking at a process for how to deal with those that paid by cash. But no, those, those mattress fees were erroneously charged and those are not part of this consumer price index adjustment.
Okay, thank you, Pauline, I can support this now.
You've heard that motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item fifty-one's a public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing on item fifty-one. Anyone here to testify on item fifty-one? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on item fifty-one.
Most approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item fifty-two's a public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing on item fifty-two. Anyone here to testify on item fifty-two? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on item fifty-two. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item fifty-three is a public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing on item fifty-three. Anyone here to testify on item fifty-three? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on item fifty-three. What's the pleasure of the board?
Most approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Regular agenda. Item fifty-four, Director Lutowski.
Chairman Gould, members of the board, Public Works is actively pursuing the final design and ultimate construction with partial federal funds for point-seven-five miles of Mountain View Road from Aztec Road north to Sterling in the Fort Mojave area. This action, as well as the next item, considers the acquisition of two private parcels required for right-of-way necessary to accommodate the project design. There's actually three total private parcels that need to be acquired for right-of-way, two of them are being considered with this board meeting. This particular parcel, Public Works is requesting board consideration and approval to pursue condemnation only on the premise that unfortunately, the owners of this parcel, both of them recently passed away. And the parcel, as we understand it, is currently entering probate. And with the potential heirs to this parcel not having the legal authority to act on the parcel and our requirement to go to construction by the April to May timeframe, as we are forced with the federal funds involved, to procure the project construction in that timeframe, we are asking the board to consider condemnation as that will at least fast-track the county's opportunity to gain access, the access it needs to initiate the construction process.
Questions for Director Lutowski? We've got one member of the public would like to speak, Scotty McClure.
Yeah, I'm glad you guys are doing this, there's so many homes being built in that area that will use this, like Valencia, you guys have been trying to do that. This one here will really make it easier instead of having to cut down to these other roads to get back up to Mountain View. And I'm hoping that you eventually get to the Bullhead City Limits where there's a gate there. I don't know how many years down the road is it, why it's not through there, you've got some people building right down there by the city limits. I don't care what water company they're being served by or what electric company. I'm hoping we go to, all the way to Corwin Road. Let's piss off those people. They got a twenty-five mile speed limit and they're giving out tickets like left and right. And I know some people that live up there happen to work for the city very high up, they got their own police department up there, a madder than heck about it. But that's not why I'm here about this. We need to get to Corwin Road so they can go down to Joanne Avenue, Corwin Road that way, Corwin Road that way. They need to make a four-lane road through Corwin Road, they're gonna be really happy tomorrow night at the city council meeting when I bring this up. So please keep going on this Mountain View Road. It's going to serve a lot of people, drive Mountain View down to Aztec and, and they would love to go to Corwin Road instead of, then they go up the Parkway and around, or down to the bridge that goes nowhere.
Thank you, sir. Attorney Espin, you looked like you were looking to jump in there.
No.
Okay.
I'm just ready if you have any questions.
Okay, questions for the attorney? Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve. Second.
You've heard that motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item fifty-five, Director Lutowski.
Chairman Gould, members of the board, this happens to be the second of three parcels that are being contemplated for acquisition with the Mountain View Road project. Public Works has exercised the utmost detail in pursuing these right-of-way acquisitions. We actually hired a private firm, CEI of Phoenix, to handle the appraisals as well as the offers to the three private property owners. In this instance, we had a, an appraisal done at an amount of seven thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars for what is a forty-two foot wide by three hundred foot long strip of right-of-way that's necessary for the project. CEI made the offer to the property owner on behalf of the county. The property owner countered with an offer of twenty thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, almost three times the appraised amount. Staff is only making a recommendation on premise of keeping the project moving with these right-of-way acquisitions. It is a board decision, however, whether or not to accept the twenty thousand one hundred and sixty dollar offer, counter offer, if you will, from the private property owner.
Director Lutowski, do we have any idea if we chose eminent domain, this, this piece of property, what length of time are we looking at and what would the legal cost be to do that?
I may turn to Attorney Espin now for some perspective in terms of the timeframe and the potential legal costs associated with that.
So, excuse me, so eminent domain takes two steps. One is you try to go for immediate possession, that's pretty common, that's usually the first step you take. And so we can, in an eminent domain, the county can get immediate possession fairly quick, so you file the, file the complaint, they'll have an opportunity to respond, they'll set a court hearing to have, on the, on the issue of immediate possession. And so that, that'll take roughly between two to three months, maybe go fairly quick. The purpose is to give immediate possession so the project can get moving because courts recognize that it takes a long time to litigate, generally speaking. And so, yeah, they can get it fairly quickly, immediate possession. And once they get immediate possession, then they can go forward and proceed immediately with any projects that they're working on. So that can go fairly quick. As far as the cost, you know, it, it depends on if they litigate it, depends on if they hire an attorney, depends on if we succeed or not, so there's a lot of variables in there. It won't cost anything from the county if we're handling it, obviously, we're handling it in-house and we would handle it in-house. So it would not cost anything from our legal fees. So I don't think it'll cost too much because we would be handling it, I don't foresee that we would have to pay their attorney's fees. The issue would just be really, oftentimes the issue is the value of the property. That's, that's really what is the, the fight. The second part of that is how much does the, is the, was the value of the property and how much does the government have to pay? So that's really what, what that's about.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
So we have a, I assume, high-priced firm out of Phoenix doing this work. They appraise, they make the offer, the seller counters, and then it comes to us. So what happened to like going back and, and countering again?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Angus, that's an excellent question. Staff could, at the board's direction, take a Mojave County counter offer back to the seller for our best and final position. And then we can either accept a motion from the board that allows staff to continue to do the acquisition, provided that we stay within the board-established ceiling. So that is certainly on the table as well. And I will also point out one other thing, I did go back to my engineering team, we also looked at solutions to engineer ourselves out of this acquisition and it's not gonna come at a price less than twenty thousand dollars.
Sure, I, I understand and I understand all of that. My, my only concern is sort of the precedent it sets. So, you know, we, we do these acquisitions, there's gonna be a few more, we know, and they're seeing that we are just accepting what they counter, what kind of leverage are we gonna have then?
I share those concerns.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
This, this is a forty-two foot wide by three hundred foot long. It doesn't appear that it's gonna reduce the value of the property. It almost looks like it's someone taking advantage of a situation. This is an important road for, for the area down there and if this one property can, can hold it up by wanting more money, I, I don't blame them if it works, but I don't think it's gonna work with this board. I think we're more responsible than, than that. So I would, I would recommend that we take the counter offer back to the seller with the appraised value. And if that offer is not accepted, then go eminent domain for the good of the community. In fact, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Before a second, can I ask a question? So if you do that, then you're doing the exact opposite. You're, you're saying to them, this is it, this is what it was appraised at, and you're not giving the landowner sort of any, any say, and I'm not sure I'm crazy about that. I just, I just want a negotiation, is really what I'm saying. Because you don't, you know, you don't want these things to say, this is the government and we're gonna take it, you know, you gotta have a little say in what happens.
Chairman, if I could jump in?
Please do.
Just following up with Supervisor Angus, the motion you could propose, and I understand there's already a motion on, a motion on the table, but if you want to amend it or change it, have a different one, move to direct staff to negotiate what they believe would be a fair price and bring it back to the board for the board then to consider. And if not, then you could look at condemnation. That way you have the flexibility to try to negotiate it back to that or whatever the case may be. And then they can come back here and if you like it, go for it. If not, then you consider your other options.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Oh, Supervisor Johnson, you're throwing your voice.
Yeah. I, I believe that's what Ms. Lutowski's already done, has given them a fair and reasonable offer like they did everybody else. offer, like they did everybody else. And I think when we start coming back with counteroffers, you're not only, you're just disrespecting all the people that want the improvements and have settled for the price that was offered. I'm all for keeping the, whatever the price we offered was great, and if we don't do the road, we don't do the road, you know? I don't care.
Chairman Gould? Supervisor Lingatfield.
I would agree with Supervisor Johnson. I think that if you look at the backup, that Steve at your staff has done your due diligence. You've done what you're supposed to do, and I think that, you know, I can support this.
So we have a motion, but no second?
What was the motion again?
To take the counteroffer back to the seller, and if that's not accepted, to go eminent domain.
And just to be clear, what I'll need, that's perfectly fine, you can do that. But if you do wish to go in domain later on, I'll have to bring, well, I would prefer to bring it back to the board to get a formal, you know, we're going to go forward with eminent domain, so.
Okay, I'll amend my motion then, to take the counteroffer back to the seller, and then bring it back to this board for...
For a decision.
For a decision.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Would it be easier just to deny this?
Might be.
Maybe.
You could do that, just you don't have direction to the staff. I mean, we kind of indirectly know that we need to go back, but I prefer Supervisor Bishop's motion.
I would prefer to perhaps have a board direction, and what we'll do is we will reiterate the board's direction to the potential seller. This is our position.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
If we deny it, you guys just go back to Public Works and draw pictures? You don't do anything else? I don't get, wouldn't that be your thing, to go back to them and say, we denied this? Now you'd come back for the next meeting to say, okay, we're going to condemn it, if you want to finish the road.
Our next step, Supervisor Johnson, would certainly be to be in contact immediately with the property owner, give them that one more opportunity, that we can only stand by the original offer that was made. And if they say no, then we come back to the board.
All right, thank you.
I have one more question, Chairman Gould. So they're offered, this has been surveyed and researched, and you believe that the seventh, that is fair market value. So when they come back, do they give any reason? Do they say, no, I don't agree with you because of this? Do they have to explain themselves, or they can just pick a number out of the air?
Chairman Gould.
Counter appraisal, yeah.
Supervisor Angus, I was party to what was really informal email conversation between our consultant and the property owners. So they were, they really didn't get into any particular details. They just made an offer. In fact, I should point out, I had this in the backup. They initially countered at $16,254, gave us a whole week to respond. Of course, we couldn't get on a board meeting that shortly, and then they came back and said, nope, time's up. Now it's going to be $20,160. So it was, excuse the word, but kind of a game that they played with us, with staff. And we had no way to get it to the board before now, and it stands at $2160.
Well, that tells a story.
I would recommend that we return with, to the property owner, with the appraised price offer of $7,182, and tell them that is the highest and best offer.
Okay.
That would be what I, but there's a motion on the floor, so we need to deal with the motion.
And that's what my motion says.
No.
The motion is to take the counteroffer back to the seller.
Take the original.
And then bring that back to this board. If they refuse our offer, then we will bring it back to the board to discuss eminent domain.
Supervisor Angus.
Is that, I just want to ask, is that the right motion for that?
That's certainly an acceptable motion, if you wish to do that.
Okay, so go back, say, that was our final offer. Take her to leave it. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll second that.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Item 56. Director Lottowski?
I should have a, Chairman Gould, members of the board, I should have a presentation that will be able to be viewed on the screen, as well as on your monitors. There we are. Well, staff at the direction of the board completed a master plan for the Mojave County Fairgrounds. It builds on the earlier needs assessment, and also, you know, recognizes some of the past work dating back to 2016, when we were also master planning, or at least looking at long-term uses for the existing fairgrounds. So we're really excited about this. We think we have a concise master plan, yet very detailed. And it's structured around what I would consider seven anchor venues, venues that can really stand on their own in terms of revenue generation, as well as function and operation. So this master plan is really structured more as a cafeteria-style master plan. What I mean by that is the board can consider each anchor venue on their own, or as I lead off here in the vision and approach, this is the same vision that was adopted with the needs assessment. But it does also present the cost of the anchor venue improvements, or in some cases, new anchor venue construction, under three categories. One category being existing facility renovation that recognizes three particular anchor venues that actually exist at the fairgrounds right now and renovating those facilities, some new facility construction. Staff proposed two particular anchor venues that really are attractive for the particular demand that the fairgrounds has for facilities uses, as well as two additional venues, new venues, that could be carried out through certain public-private partnership endeavors. So with that, I would like to recognize, introduce Kristen Zimmerman, our parks administrator, and she'll walk you through each of the seven anchor venues. Kristen.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Before we get started, I think we're just going to give a quick overview. I know it's really hard to tell, but that's the picture of the conceptual drawing. You have larger pictures at your stations. I think it's important to look at what we currently have at the fairgrounds, so we can fully assess where we see ourselves growing in the future. So here are some pictures. This is what the RV park looks like currently. It needs some love. The inside of the expo building, staff is doing a great job keeping it clean and painting and making some bathroom improvements as needed, but all in all, it still looks relatively the same. The show arena is what I call this. This is the area that 4H has their show and auctions during the fair, so it gets utilized a lot during the fair. The stables, just recently, the staff went in and made some massive improvements, so it looks a lot better than what it does right there. And then the rodeo arena and grandstands area. First, I want to go through some renovations that we are proposing for some of our existing facilities. And I just did a little snapshot of each, so it's real quick, to the point. So we're looking at 32 full hookup sites, having a bathroom and shower house, a dog park, because 80% of all RV users have dogs, overnight stalls and oversized parking. Or, yeah. So that would be for, like, transient guests. So we get a lot of use for people with rodeo travel, so cattle trucks and horses and that kind of stuff, so we could have an area just for those transient guests, so they're not, they don't have to have access to the full fairgrounds as well. Estimated construction cost is around $1.2 million, and we're looking at about $135,000 in potential grant funding. This would, we're estimating would have about $115,000 in annual revenue impact. And that's based on what we typically see at our other RV parks, usage a little lower than that because of the use that we have at the fairgrounds. The exposition center is 22,000 square feet, and we're looking at interior and exterior upgrades, utility upgrades, just giving it a facelift, taking it down to the studs, and building it back up. It's about $1.3 million. Grant funding, we're looking about $50,000 with an annual estimated revenue of about $140,000. And those are, oh. And this is where the brunt of the facility improvements are, is the equine livestock arena in Midway. So the show arena, the pictures that you saw earlier, it currently sort of works for our use, but that would go under a massive rehaul and actually be sort of all-new. And then the show arena, or the show arena, the arena itself would have lighting upgrades, new panels and bathrooms. We are also, would like to relocate the Midway to more of the central heart of the fairgrounds for two things. For the fair operations, it makes it more useful on the other side. And then also to be a good neighbor, so taking the loud carnival and making it more of a central location, so you have that buffer of the parking lot spaces and just more space between that and the neighbors. And then also adding stockyards, so we would have the ability to do stock sales. The closest place to here to have stock sales is Wickenburg. So having something that's on the I-40 corridor is, would be completely beneficial. We're estimating the construction cost of all of that is $4.3 million, and I know that sounds like a lot, but it can all be piecemealed as funds allow. And then estimated grant funding of about $550,000 with an estimated annual revenue of $117. Parking and roadways, this is where, this, we are planning for 1,500 paved parking spots with some tailgate plazas. So like, when we have the rodeo in town, it's a place where people can gather and have a picnic. And then access driveways or roadways that go through the fairgrounds at Detroit and Airfield, moving the main entrance off of Harrison to allow for easier access. All of that is about $5.2 million, and then there would be no estimated revenue gained on that.
Ms. Zimmerman, when you're quoting revenue numbers, those are total revenue numbers, not-profit numbers?
Correct.
Thank you.
So some of the new facility construction we're proposing, a special event barn venue. It's important for us to build upon the essence of the fairgrounds, so that agricultural livestock tradition is really important. So having an upscale special event barn space that would be available for quinceañeras, weddings, receptions, that sort of thing, would be great and highly utilized. Catering kitchen, an outdoor photo vignette, so photographers would be able to rent out a space that people could have their family pictures. You know, if we have a cactus garden or an overlook of the Wallopys, so. Construction cost is about $1.6 million with an annual estimated revenue of $160,000. Part of the essence were parks, so part of the essence of what parks are is community recreation. So I think, we think it's important to have a space where the public can come out at any given time and have a destination playground. It's going to look really cool. I want it to be a place where people travel, come see, they can have a picnic, their family can have a picnic, they can have a birthday party, large pavilions and ramadas, wide walkways for vendors for large events, so we could have wine festivals during the fair. The food vendors can be lining that main sidewalk that goes kind of diagonally up through the property. We're estimating the construction cost of being $1.4 million with significant grant funding potentially coming in about $500,000. Annual revenue would only be $12,000 a year, but the benefit to the community, I believe, would be much greater than that. There's a variety of public and private partnerships that could be available at the fairgrounds, and mainly it's up north of, if Detroit went through, north of that. So an outdoor amphitheater space, multi-use space, keep in mind, these are conceptual drawings, what you have in front of us, in front of you. And we're throwing, or we've discussed having something like a water retention basin, which would defer some of our, like, it would provide us some additional funding perhaps, and also act similarly to the Green Hole, if you're familiar, in Kingman. I'm over off, I think it's off of Eastern. And then have an outdoor amphitheater space that we could have concerts, but we could contract out with a private company, and they would be able to solicit larger acts to come through at a much more reasonable fee. Again, estimated revenue would be, is TBD, because it's all determined on that contract. We're estimating about $3.5 million. And that would include the outdoor amphitheater, a large green space or retention basin, bathrooms and concession stands, LED lighting, and so on. The other area that would potentially be for a public-private partnership is an indoor arena and event center. So we're looking at a multi-use venue, so not just indoor rodeos, it could be concerts, it could be, I mean, really, your imagination is the limitation, large digital interstate sign, just let people know what's coming up, bathrooms and concession stands, shared paved parking with BMX. We're estimating the construction cost to be about $4 million. And again, the estimated annual revenue is to be determined. It's also important for us, as we move through the conceptual drawings into the actual planning stage, that we continue our community engagement. So as we start to plan out these facilities, to get into the nuts and bolts of things, it's really important for us to engage the community. And through that, we would include them throughout the design process for relevant venues. So when we're talking about redesigning the rodeo arena, of course, we're going to include people like the Kings, groups like the Kingsmen and other groups that use that facility. Also landscaping elements as a part of the design will include the public and the community in those endeavors as well, whether it's planning out the design or helping us plant plants. It reduces our costs, but also engages the community, so they have an invested interest in the facility. One of my favorite things to do is a community develop, or community build model for like a playground. So you have the playground manufacturers come in and then they install it. They have certified people to install the playgrounds, but you can also have the public put in the panels and put up the slides, and it's a really fun way to get the community engaged. Everybody, well, I won't say everybody. Most people love playgrounds, and they're a benefit to the community. So having groups like the Rotary Clubs and the Sir Optimus Clubs of the Mojave County come in and help us build those playgrounds, again, it's inviting that, those groups in so they have an invested interest into your property. They're more likely to then have their company picnics out there and those kind of things, and they want to see it taken care of for generations to come. And then there's also the potential for a community partner with the community gardens. We're proposing to have community gardens around that community central recreation area. And that, again, goes back to the agriculture. So the essence of the fairgrounds is to have a community place that offers education in agriculture and livestock. And that's where a good chunk of our funding comes from, is the Governor's Fund. So giving a nod back to that is a great way to show our support in the Governor's Fund. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Supervisor Bishop?
I have many questions, but I think the main one is, this looks like it's being proposed so that it can be done in stages. So when we apply for grants for various areas, we've got a blueprint where we can, if we get grants for one particular area, we can move it up and work on that when the money's available. So one of my questions was, and has been for years, the old jail behind the new courthouse has a beautiful kitchen in it. I'm hoping that because that is staged for demolition, that we can maybe reuse some of that stainless steel equipment that's in there. So that's just... So that's just something that I've always thought should be reused in some way. And then my question on the community recreation, the park, the dog park, would that be open to the public year-round? Would there be a fee connected to that, so people can come and go and use these facilities? The Green Hole, you said that's gonna be used as a retention basin, and I would hope that we can maybe put an injection well there, and if we do manage to save some stormwater, get it back into the aquifer. So, you know, that's something that I'm sure that Development Services will be looking into. And then my last comment was, the indoor arena and the event center, I am absolutely thrilled that that's being planned there. I think that's gonna make a world of difference, and being able to incorporate that with the existing arena and the, the other facilities will complement each other. So I'm hoping we get a grant for that and can go forward with it as one of our top priorities. But thank you very much for this presentation. I see that we've got some flexibility here, but it's really nice to have that blueprint to where if we can go forward in one area and not the other, we can, we can still make progress. That's all I have. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Ling and Filter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. Kristen and Steve, thank you for your work on this. Just a few things, and I'm gonna refer to the diagram that you showed. Could you maybe, could, just so everybody could follow along with what I'm gonna say, could you maybe throw that map back up, the rendering? Just so everybody can, has sort of a visual idea. So, first of all, I think, you know, it looks like to me a pretty good layout. I've got a couple of things I'd like to just suggest maybe this board and staff consider. When you look in the southeast quadrant, and it's where it says "main entrance" there on Harrison and Airfield Avenue, I'm wondering if we could maybe bump that up to where Harrison intersects with Detroit. We've segregated the parcel, the facility into really three segments. Everything to the north of Detroit is all commercial and recreational. And really, by extending Detroit Avenue through, you create another community commercial corridor there. I mean, you've got the city's firefighters' park there to the west, then you've got the Circle K, you've got the junior high, you've got the Safeway, and a couple of the big retail plazas on Stockton Hill Road. And then if you continue through on the east, you get into another school, there's a vet's office over there, there's another few offices, and it leads to Andy Devine, which is another commercial, a main arterial commercial corridor. So I think if we could move the main entrance out of the residential areas and move it to where, you know, Detroit Avenue would just be all to the north commercial, it makes more sense in my mind to make that commercial, community commercial corridor the main entrance and exit, and try to get it away as, away from the neighborhoods, so they're not seeing a bunch of congestion when you have big events. That would be the first point I would make. The second, I think, is, I appreciate, I know during the two meetings of the ad hoc committee, that we had this concept of public-private partnerships come up, and I really appreciate you guys calling that out. I've always thought, if this is a fairgrounds, it's a county function, it's a, it's a community thing, why not, why does it have to be all the county that would take this on? Why not identify areas and perhaps enter into a series of public-private development agreements, for instance? And just to throw this out as an example, with the Kingsmen, who have been here many, many years, I know that they do a lot of western-themed events, they've got big plans for additional, perhaps rodeo-style events. Why not negotiate some sort of a public-private partnership with that entity for both the rodeo arena, perhaps some contribution for the indoor arena? And maybe, you know, they can contribute either with their membership through in-kind trades or construction, donation of services, or going out and helping to fundraise. So I just appreciate the public-private partnership with some of the longstanding organizations that have used this facility and bringing them in and giving them some buy-in as far as building this thing up so it can be used. The last thing I'm gonna use, or say, is on back to the southeast corner, if you could make the map go all the way down to the southeast corner. So I know that you're planning for 1,500 parking spaces right now, and I look at the four acres that is on the extreme southeast corner, which is on Motor Avenue and Harrison. And then I look along Harrison, anybody that's familiar with Kingman, they know that a majority of our multifamily apartments, our workforce housing, is along Harrison. If you go up to, if you go north, past Detroit, but before you get to Beverly, I mean, you've got one apartment complex there, you've got a senior housing complex right below it. That southeast corner of the fairgrounds property right now is, what about, is it four acres, did you say? So what I'm wondering is, when we're talking about public-private partnerships or even just an outright sale, and nobody's really talked about it yet, but we have this workforce housing issue, this crisis here, what if we put up that four acres, either for an outright sale, find somebody that can build a little apartment complex right there? It would help to solve our workforce housing crisis. It looks like it's right adjacent to the playground, so families could just walk right over to the playground and use that. They'd be within walking distance to all the facilities, so it'd be a true multi-use place. And then the proceeds could be reinvested back into the fairgrounds to continue to build things up. So I just wanted to throw that out. The only other thing that I didn't see, and I understand it's a matter of physical constraint, during the ad hoc committee, we had motorsports that came out as a huge priority. We obviously don't have the space to do any motorsports events at all at this property. You're making the best of what you have, I understand that. It's unfortunate that we can't do motorsports here because they are a major revenue generator. So I guess my last question would be, do you believe that eventually this facility on essentially what you have programmed here is gonna be able to someday down the road break even?
Chairman, Supervisor Ling and Filter, we did bring in some financials, and keep in mind they're estimates. At the end of this current fiscal year, we're showing that we will be still in the hole, I think, was it $57,000, and that includes our debt that we've, cumulative debt that we've accrued. The end of next fiscal year will be in positive, show positive about $60,000 as well. So we're gonna show a net revenue of about $110,000 each year moving forward if we maintain our status quo.
That's certainly far more positive than what we've seen.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Ling and Filter, I should add, though, while it's extremely promising that we're going to see a positive net revenue, we are, as staff, going to have to be cognizant of investing, say, that up to $100,000 additional surplus back into our existing infrastructure to, we are, we were handed some facilities that are in, you know, reasonable need of, of care. So I would anticipate that staff will probably be looking at presenting in future budget years, balanced budgets that utilize as much of the surplus funds in, back into our existing infrastructure until such time as we take on a formal renovation project.
Great. Those are the only comments that I had. I'm not sure how the other board members feel about some of the comments I've thrown out.
Supervisor Ling and Filter.
Throwing your voice again.
Yeah.
So, you know, when we talk about public-private partnership, community involvement, since this is in Kingman, and when we were even talking about moving the fairgrounds, we were lobbied hard by the people in Kingman who believe it should, it belongs there. Does the City of Kingman have any, do they input any monetary funds into this, or do we have any partnerships with them? Because obviously, they are a big beneficiary of what happens there.
Chairman, Supervisor Angus, once or if the conceptual plans are approved, at that point, we would discuss those options with the City of Kingman, especially with the potential of Detroit and Airfield going through, and that would probably come through a right of a permit, where they would build and maintain, we would suggest that they build and maintain those roads as part of City of Kingman roads.
Have we ever, have they been partners at all in the fairgrounds?
We partner with some events, such as the Fourth of July, we host the City of Kingman's Fourth of July fireworks, and then we have other events.
Right, but not in the maintenance upkeep of this facility in their city? Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're looking at $15 million here? Is that all general fund? This is the ballpark. I mean, I know you could get grants and you could get, but the bulk of that's coming from general fund money, correct?
Yeah. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, it's about 22 million when it's all said and done. A majority of that is parking improvements, then new facility construction. We can schedule it in a way as funds allow, or grants and that sort of stuff. I don't, I would say that it would just, they would become self-sustaining at this point, unless somebody would like to give up a portion of their ARPA designation.
Okay, but 22 million, I guess my question for the board is, I thought we were moving this fairgrounds, and I like the design, it looks nice and everything. If that was something we were starting fresh with, you know, that, that might work, but 22 million, I don't think we have it and won't have it in the, in the near future unless we initiate some kind of a tax generating revenue for it. I thought we were just gonna maintain this until we decided on the location of a new one, and then the funding source for that one. If we put this kind of money into it, then we should keep it and forget about moving it. I mean, that would be my opinion. And the other question I have in here is, I see the attorney is doing us a wonderful job by trying to allow recommended fee increases and reductions in this proposal here if we accept today. I thought we had to go out to public hearings on that. I'm pretty sure the last time we had a board meeting on fairground fees, we said there would be no deductions for nonprofits, and in this, I see where now we're making recommendations to give nonprofits reductions. But we can't be addressing fee structures in a meeting without having a public hearing. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
If I may answer that, yes, but I don't, you weren't adopting anything here, were you?
We provide Supervisor Johnson a disclaimer that these are just staff recommended fees, adjustments, if you will, for the nonprofit. We do have a suggestion for pricing for next year's fair, but we caveat all of this by saying that it, a public hearing is mandatory, that there is no adoption with the approval of the master plan if the board were to approve the master plan.
Did I miss something at the last meeting? I thought the board was like five to oh on there was gonna be no preferential treatment for anybody at the fairgrounds. It is a money-making proposition. So you just thought you'd throw that one in again, 'cause you like nonprofits?
Staff merely suggested what could be a possible adjustment for nonprofit organizations.
They don't, they don't get to watch the board meetings to find out what the board votes, I guess. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor. That was my recollection, recollection also, is we were going to maintain the fairgrounds as much in existing, fix the things that were broken, and that we were searching for a new location. Since you can't do motorsports at this location, it's never gonna turn a buck. Just from the estimates, it's a 10-year, just to make the same amount of revenue that we would spend, and that's not, that's not a profit number, that's just a revenue number. So the whole thing is a big fiscal loser without the motorsports things. And you've got a area that, it's now, other than the I-40 corner, the thing is surrounded by residential properties, which whatever we do there is gonna create problems for those people, those homeowners there. You did a great, I like the layout, I will say, you guys did a good job on the layout, but the, my whole point is, we need to move the fairgrounds out of that area. We need to sell that, sell that site to generate the money to purchase the new facility and do the improvements that we, at the new facility. So we can wrestle over the location of the new facility, but I could never see putting this, you know, $23 million into a temporary location, that just doesn't make any sense to me. But those are just my thoughts. Supervisor Bishop?
So Chairman Gould, the way I recall was that once we got pushback from Walnut Creek, I believe the motion was to leave the fairgrounds where it is and not to go looking for another site. So maybe, maybe Sam can clarify that, but that's, that's what I remember, is that we voted to leave the fairgrounds where it is and to improve on what we had. So a couple of the things that were brought up was the roads. And Steve, I'd like you to go into your reasoning for making the, the main entrance on Airfield Avenue. If I recall, that was so that trucks and trailers would have a straight shot from Andy Devine without making turns. And then there's another road extending Detroit all the way across, and I believe that's so that we can move a large amount of traffic in and out of the fairgrounds during events. But can, can you elaborate on that some?
Well, during larger events, Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, during larger events, both the Detroit and the airway access would be quote-unquote "main entries." Any pavement, and we do show a connecting circulation road along Airfield as well as Detroit within the fairgrounds, that's currently intended to be solely operated and maintained by the fairgrounds, only under a potential future separate proposal for some sort of city-county partnership would, you know, we would ever consider turning those roads over. So those are just gonna be circulatory roads. So again, the mindset, if you will, for both the Airfield and Detroit access points being main entry points, of course, we could improve their management and maybe make the Airfield a less high-demand type access point, maybe just having access for, you know, certain individuals, participants, et cetera, so that we focus more on Detroit being the main participant access.
Okay, and then the motorsports, a portion of this all, we could have a fairgrounds annex in another location for motorsports, where the noise and, and all the commotion wouldn't affect the residential areas. And then lastly, I just wanted to say that I would be adamantly opposed to putting low-income apartment housing on part of this property, because it's, it's one fairgrounds location. If we go cutting it up to make rental space for, for the workforce, I just don't think is conducive to the, the appearance and the, the look that the fairgrounds has, and I don't think we can ever get enough parking, so. Anyway, I, I think it's, I think it's a good layout. I, I think it's gonna take many, many years to complete, but with this blueprint, we can go forward and, and do it in stages. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
County manager.
We, we've been at this for a while, if you recall. We've had multiple discussions, including other sites, and at the last time that the board considered that, there was a healthy debate, the board made a decision to get, to keep it here at this site and directed staff to come up with a master plan, and that's what we're doing today. We, we see this as a roadmap. What we envision is coming back to the board multiple trips as we embark on specific improvements that are part of this plan. We do not see 15 or 20 or 22 million of general funds going into this. going into this facility unless the board directs us. Otherwise, we see this phased in with grants and an annual budget process that looks at finances where we're at. We will, to the extent possible, do self-sustaining budgeting as far as improvements are concerned. If opportunities come for private-public partnerships, we will bring those to the board for consideration, discussion, and approval. We will pursue every avenue that we can if this is approved as a roadmap to what is envisioned at this site. So we, we spent quite a bit of time looking at these numbers and understanding that nothing happens without an approval today, without a nod from the board that would say, yeah, we, you're in a ballpark and this is not a carte blanche. You're going to advance these concepts with more details and come back with, to the board for buy-ins and further approvals. So, you know, as far as motorsports, we could contemplate other areas, other sites. We envisioned that's what the board wants us to do the last time the board made a decision to keep this here. We understood as staff that by keeping the fairground at the current site, there would be no room for motorsports. So if motorsports are desired, we could pursue other sites and come back to the board in the future. But, you know, we've been, we've been at this for a while. These facilities that are continuing to serve our annual county fair need some TLC. And we, we don't want to spend and incur costs without a blessing, without nod, without approval from the board that you're on board with it. So we see really this as a, as an overarching conceptual plan that will need to, will need much detail and much work will be phased in. But we don't see a lot of general fund money going into it. At least, that is not our vision and approach. And again, it's all predicated on future board approvals. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. I just don't see this being grant-funded. The estimate, staff's estimate of grants was, was less than 10%. I just really don't see you getting grants to build this, which means it's going to come out of property taxes. You got three-fifths of the property taxes are collected along the Colorado River. To me, a lot of this looks like amenities for Kingman. You know, dog parks and things like that. That's, my folks aren't coming up here to use the dog park. Half my folks have, actually, all my folks have a dog park within 10 miles of them. So essentially, this is, you're shifting the three-fifths of the revenue in, up to spend it up here. And that's just unacceptable to me.
Unless we have a sales tax.
Not doing that either, so.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you Chairman Gould. First of all, I think I voted in opposition to keeping it here. I think that we knew that we were going to take this on and invest in something that wherever you spend a sum like $22 million, it's not going to move once you spend that much money or you invest that much money. But really, I was hoping that it wouldn't just be on the county that you would take advantage of the Public Procurement Office and issue a series of RFIs, requests for information, and say, hey, you know, split this up into sections and say, for this facility, here's what's possible. Do we have any groups that would step up and what would you propose? So they take on the leading part of it, right? Absolutely. That seems like a more sensible way to try to develop something if we're going to keep it here than the county, as Chairman Gould said, you know, it's in Kingman. So hopefully, it would be more privately led through development agreements that are negotiated and agreed to. And they wouldn't fall on the back of our taxpayers. I mean.
Supervisor Lingefelter, if I may, that was along the line of what staff had been thinking. I want to emphasize that, you know, it's plausible to consider accepting the master plan simply as a preliminary framework. But staff intentionally placed those two facilities, those two anchor venues, the indoor arena as well as the multi-use facility north of Detroit in the potential anticipation that if there was a P3 model available, such as a long-term land lease or even an outright sale, that that would be in terms, the funding generator for the balance of the improvements. We did highlight two of them that I think with a conservative revenue estimate, the RV park as well as the barn facility having a return on investment of less than 10 years. So, and then of course, taking care of our existing facilities. So potentially, that land north of Detroit with a smart public-private arrangement could really bring a substantial amount of revenue to the county. Those models have worked in other fairground situations across the country. So it's a possibility.
I definitely appreciate that. And I know that there was a comment against any sort of multi-family apartment complex. Again, just looking for alternative revenue sources to try to build up facilities, right? I don't think that you're going to need 1,500 parking spaces. I don't know how much, how many parking spaces the big event center down in Mojave Valley has. But I don't think you're going to need 1,500 spaces. And that southeast corner is bordered by residential already on the south and on the east. All of the apartment complexes, you know, I should say, a vast majority of the apartment complexes in Kingman that don't look junky. I mean, they can be designed to a certain standard, architectural standard. They're all long Harrison. It's just trying to think outside the box and relieve any sort of envisioned taxpayer contribution. That's all I have to say.
I got a couple of people from the public that wanted to weigh in. Scotty McClure.
I usually don't compliment people, but whoever made this up did a damn good job. I guess it's these guys. It doesn't say anywhere on here who to thank. But coming from me, this is pretty good. It's a start. Remember Buster, you said five-year plan? This is part of it. You said that back in January and I agreed with you then. I don't know why we need 2,500 parking spots. I wish some of you guys would go out there to the fairgrounds and look at the structures that you have, that steel. Try buying that. You can use that steel out there in those buildings for the next 100 and 200 years. The Pies has an auction, New Year's Eve, New Year's auction, Saturday. Go to the fairgrounds and go to the auction. Do not bed me up. But this is a way, and you can see the kitchens there that they already have. Those are tens of thousands of dollars in those kitchens. You've got to have commercial-grade $10,000 ovens, you know, refrigerators, freezers. I mean, we're talking 20 grand and stuff. We already have that. That, I don't know what the lifetime on it is. Why are you changing the entrance? See, you're fixing something that ain't broken. Governments are very good at that. There's nothing wrong, these people bought these houses knowing that this was here. Nobody got surprised that, oh, well, all of a sudden, there's a noise from the fairgrounds. They have more noise from the freeway, Jake breaks. I don't care if they're illegal or not right there. They still use them. This would be a good place in this northeast, northwest corner to put the morgue. I said that before. They don't use it right now for nothing. Or I would prefer it right over here. Like you guys have kind of decided on that. Need a place for the morgue somewhere. I don't know which side would be better. You keep losing bodies, I guess, again today. But there's, this is, start with the RV park if you're going to do anything. That will generate some money. It's illegal for these people that go to the rodeos, the Paeson, Flagstaff, Prescott, et cetera, et cetera, Tucson. It's illegal for them to leave their horses on a trailer for after, for 24 hours. They have to stop somewhere. They don't have to have a logbook, but they have to stop by law. If you get the word out, these people have money to pay for an RV spot, put their horses over here. You own a horse, you know how expensive it is, so. But get the word out, start with that RV park and the stalls. Like I said before, the bathrooms work at the place. I've never seen a toilet back up. Having trouble.
Thank you, sir. Pam Tappan.
I think it's still morning. Good morning, my name is Pam Tappan. I'm a four-year resident of Kingman and I love it here. And I also love the fairgrounds. I love attending events. Now, I gave you this very rough drawing of something that, this fairgrounds is going to be talked about for years to come. But right now, we have a problem. And you guys, I don't know where it's going to end up. It may end up here, it may end up someplace else. But right now, I love going to the fair. I'm 74 years old and I love the fair as well. What I don't like is waiting 45 minutes to get into the parking lot and another 45 minutes to buy a ticket. That's the current problem we have that needs to be addressed before you even consider moving or going forward with this master plan, which I think is gorgeous. But you need to have traffic flow better. The poor people that are running traffic, they don't run it. It is terrible. I don't know if you've been to the opening of the rodeo or the opening of the fair. I want to go and enjoy the fair. I don't want to be mad by the time I get into the fair. So just these simple little things, it's not going to cost a dime. You have an exit on motor. Open that up, make it four lanes. Two lanes coming in, split it to four lanes to pay for parking. You know, give these people the change they need. People are handing them $50 bills, $100 bills, $20 bills. These people are running all over the parking lot trying to find change for these people. It's silly. Then the ticket booth for the fair, we had two ticket lines open. The ticket line was almost out on fairgrounds from where it was and it was almost a complete circle. These are simple things. They don't cost money. Just clean up the weeds. You know, would you want to go to this fairground the way it looks now? No, but I still do because it's a fun place to go. Would you, advertising. We have a little sign. If you're not making revenue, shame on you. There's no public endorsement for the fair. There's auctions out there. I went to a Jincana for the girls that are training to be in the rodeo. They're going from seven years old up to 15. Nobody knew it was there. It was a great event. So do more publication of the people that want to come and be at the fair because it's a great event. So thank you. And please do something and don't make us a redheaded stepchild for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
Make a motion that we accept this, this master plan as a blueprint for the future improvements for the Mojave County fairgrounds.
And Chairman, if I could just add, I do, I think Supervisor Johnson made a valid point. Those, those cost assessments in there are not to be implemented or any change, any changes to the fees. Any changes to the fees have to go through a public process, just to be clear on that master plan.
Okay, I'll add that to the end of my motion then.
Thank you.
Do you have that Jenny?
Motion dies for lack of second.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
Since my motion died, I'll give another stab at it. I make a motion that we, that we send this master plan back for adjustments and bring it back to the board within 60 days.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
May I ask Supervisor Bishop to clarify what she means by adjustments?
The adjustments would be made after going over the testimony here today and the comments from the supervisors to try to amend some of the problems that were outlined by individual supervisors.
Thank you.
Motion dies for lack of second.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Most of the day.
I'm going to second your motion. You've heard that motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, it's ordered.
Thank you. So what this contemplates is, let me back up just a little bit. So the Lake Havasu City has approached Mojave County. There's a parcel of land that is near the campus at ASU campus at Lake Havasu. It's about, it's a little bit shy of an acre. It's about .8 in size acre. And they initially approached Mojave County to see about leasing it, and that was brought to the board on September 6th, 2022. The board voted County Attorney's Office to work with Lake Havasu about a possible five-year lease. And when we talked to Lake Havasu City, they, they, they had some challenges with that. They, they didn't, they didn't want to put a lot of money into something for only a five-year period and stuff. And so they came back to this, came back to us and said, hey, would you be interested in selling it? And so this, this essentially is starting the process to potentially sell the property. What this involves is, in, in order to sell property, in order for Mojave County to sell property, it has to be appraised, and there has to be an auction, a public auction. Those are the two requirements. Um, we can waive the public auction requirement if it's a unanimous sale to another government entity. Um, but regardless of what we do, there, there has to be an appraisal done. And so what this, what this involves is an agreement with Lake Havasu City to conduct an appraisal of that property and then bring it back to the board for a board decision, whether you wish to sell it or not. And it, it does not obligate you to sell it. If you, if you look back, if you get the appraisal and it says, you know what, we don't like this idea, then you don't have to vote for it. You just, you wouldn't sell the property to Lake Havasu. Um, if, if they come back, if the Lake Havasu comes back and says, you know what, we don't like that appraisal either, we, we changed our mind, they don't have to go forward with it either. Neither party is obligated to go forward with it. Well, what this does is it shifts the, the responsibility. So basically whoever walks away from the appraisal will have to pay for it. So if we go forward with the appraisal and we, and the county sells it to Lake Havasu City, then they will have to bear the cost of the appraisal. They'll, they'll have to pay for that. If we walk away, if the county says, you know what, we like the appraisal, but we're going to walk away, then the county would have to pay the appraisal because we walked away from it. If Lake Havasu decides that they don't want to do it, and then, and then, then they would have to pay the cost of the appraisal as well. It's just, basically, we're just making sure whoever walks away will have to be responsible for the appraisal. Um, but if, if Mojave County does sell it, then they will, Lake Havasu will obviously have to pay the cost of the appraisal.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Ryan? You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Number 58, County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, this item was discussed in executive session, and it's already for a motion.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingenfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. I'd like to make a motion to approve the joint representation agreement and cost-sharing arrangement with Clark Hill for suit against the United States Bureau of Reclamation for the Town of Queen Creek Colorado River Transfer Project under the National Environmental Policy Act. And with that, I'd like to publicly, um, thank Supervisor Holly Irwin and her colleagues on the La Paz County Board of Supervisors, their staff, Yuma County Supervisor Lynn Pencrie, um, her colleagues on the Yuma County Board of Supervisors and their staff, um, and also thank the City of Yuma, um, their city manager, their counsel, and their staff, um, for joining this. I think it sends a great message from the Utah border all the way down to the Mexico international border. Western Arizona is unified and opposed to the BOR's finding of no significant impact regarding this transfer.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Number 59, Supervisor Lingenfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. I placed this item, um, as a new supervisor, about halfway through my term, um, looking through some of the past things that this Board of Supervisors has done, I found something very interesting, um, during the fiscal year 15, 16 budget cycle, uh, where they looked at perhaps, um, making improvements to the county budgeting process to make it easier for the citizens to follow and comprehend, but also to give the board, uh, new tools to work with the county manager, his staff, the other elected officials, um, to make sure that this county board's priorities and the citizens that we represent, that their priorities are always aligning with the priorities of the citizens that we serve. Um, it, the, the item called out discretionary spending or non-mandated, non-mandated programs and services. However, uh, I think when it comes to a county government, um, it's always good to try to build in some sort of mechanism to show the citizens that we do hear them, that we do hear the priorities, that we're actually, um, you know, we're articulating what the purpose of all the goals being set are, and are we making, uh, are we progressing on those purposes? Um, you know, putting things in context over a number of years regarding a program, is it achieving measurable progress? We don't really have a mechanism to really do that. So I just thought I would try to start a community, or excuse me, a board conversation on that. Uh, we have a new county manager, we have a new financial services director, uh, and perhaps there's an opportunity to work with them to make some improvements to our current budgeting process. That's all I have. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Supervisor Angus.
So you mentioned 15 to 16. Are you talking about when we discussed zero-based budgeting?
Yes, I think that's where it started. It's where it started. Um, and there, there was a robust conversation about that. Um, I thought being a new board, having a new county manager, having a new financial services director, that it would be a good time to try to dust that off to see if, um, you know, maybe we want to do something at this point in time in 2022.
So, so how are you, Chairman Gould?
Supervisor Angus.
So how are you, um, how you foresee this going down? Because it is very, very time-consuming for staff. That's one thing we learned in 15, 16. I do agree, we have new, new people. I don't want to, you know, do things just for the sake of doing them. So if, if there were specific, you know, areas, maybe the start, maybe pick something and then see if it's worth doing everything after, uh, over? Um, because I, I don't even, honestly, I don't even remember how that zero-based budgeting thing ended, do you?
I think it was pretty much what we were already doing. It was just.
Yeah.
Not called out.
Yeah, I think that, I think that was, like, on the end of the day, when they sit down to the budget, that's pretty much what they're doing, I, I think. So, but if you foresee, you know, you're new, and if you see anything that you think we could, and you've been here, so you kind of also have a different perspective since you've been worked at the county before.
Chairman Gould, if I may respond. Um, this is only from, from my opinion, but I'm thinking, when you look at our budget document right now, our budget book right now, um, there's, there aren't really performance measures for a lot of the departments. You look through and you, and you look at their budget books, and they don't have really anything, like, what are we trying to achieve? What are the goals for this? What are the performance measures? How are we going to measure against? I mean, where are you trying to get to? Um, they just continue programs on, and we just do it because we've always done it. At least that's what it seems like to me. So, um, I think it's a good first step to, for the public, everything that we do, that we label it either as a mandated service, uh, an essential service as they did, or a non-mandated service. So we help our citizens to understand. Um, and then within each one of those, what was the intent initially for that program or service? Are we measuring that in some sort of a way where we can manage it effectively? Are we making progress under that program or service? And if we're not, we should probably be making some changes to it. I don't know how you would implement that into our progress, into our process, but, um, I've been through two county budgets on this board right now. We haven't done anything like that, so.
I'm all for it. I mean, Mr. Chair. We do a lot of things that we get into them, and we've had this discussion before, like Supervisor Angus said, um, that we don't tax the people for. We tax them for certain reasons, and now we're spending money on things that we didn't tax them for. I could mention dog parks, but I, but I won't get into that. Uh, but I think looking at non-mandated services first might be a good step forward at budget time, say, hey, do we need these programs? Is this something that we're taxing our people for that, you know, should be done by a nonprofit or done by themselves, or, you know, somebody else do it besides the tax dollars that we collect? But I agree.
Thank you. Looks like Mr. Minurian is, wants to weigh in.
Yes, Chairman Gould, uh, supervisors. So a couple of questions, uh, had come up in the course of conversations today, and I just wanted to provide a little bit of history first, uh, because the board composition has changed since 2016, uh, 15, 16. So back in, I believe, the conversation around zero-based budgeting started in August of 2015. And the, the, as a result of that conversation, Financial Services completed a very comprehensive review at a program level across all the different departments. And that process started in September 2015. It culminated in December of 2015. So you had, you know, roughly three, three and a half months in there, um, input from every single department in the county. Uh, there was a couple of financial services staff that were devoted pretty much full-time over the course of that three months. Uh, the output of that was a 500 and something page report that walked through every single program and service provided by every county department, split out between mandated services, non-mandated services, and discretionary services. At the time that that review was done, uh, we, we saw as a result of that, that non-mandated general fund services, and, and when I say non-mandated general fund services, I'm excluding contingency reserves, even though those are not mandated, uh, they totaled about $2.4 million, and that was less than 3% of the total, total general fund budget at the time. Um, as far as things that we have done since then as a county through the budget process in FY 2017, uh, as part of the budget packages that the departments were requested to submit, they were required to include a breakdown of those mandated essential and discretionary services. That practice was continued through FY 21. But that data, while it was submitted by the departments in FY 21, it was not included in the final budget, uh, and it has not been requested of the departments since then. So in FY 22 and FY 23, it was not requested of the departments. And I think one of the supervisors made the point that it, it is very time-consuming for staff, and there wasn't a whole lot that, as far as I can tell, looking back through the, the board meeting notes and, and budget notes, there wasn't much that was being done with the data. Um, so it wasn't requested of the departments the last two fiscal years. During FY 20 budget process. fiscal years. During FY 20 budget process, departments were asked to begin submitting performance metrics. And Supervisor Langenfelder, I believe this is what you were referring to, that you saw that for some departments. And those, those performance metrics, the intent there was to have each department clearly state what the program goals were, and then provide a year-over-year comparison to see, hey, are they meeting the metrics that they have determined? And we ask the departments to determine those metrics because the departments that are running the programs are in the best position to know what is a good measure of how successful a given program is. And so the intent was to clearly state those and then basically provide an opportunity to compare and say, hey, are we, are we measuring up against the standard that we've set for ourselves? Do we need to have a course correction, something like that? In reading your agenda item and the backup that you provided, it looks like you, you have three goals that, you know, you want to keep county taxes as low as possible. You are looking to prioritize mandated services over non-mandated, and you also want to provide transparency for citizens. The, the third item on there, we are implementing a new budget software this year called ClearGov. That will absolutely provide a lot more transparency into the process. We are, we are in the process of, of getting that up and running. But that's something we could bring something back to the board if you so desire. I can also point you to examples of counties that are already using it, where you can, you can drill down into, you know, an individual line item within, within a budget and pull up just about as much detail as you could ever wish for. So there's, there's a lot of room for improvement, and it's something that we are working on currently.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Langenfelder.
Thank you Director Maury. And I appreciate your input. I would agree with the three goals that you stated. And I'm going to make a comment, and I don't mean it to sound harsh at all. I keep hearing that, well, this is going to be a lot of work on staff. But isn't that why we're here? Isn't that why we signed up to serve in the public sector? I mean, I understand it's a lot of work. But it happens in the private sector too, you know. So I think that we want to do what we can. And I understand it's a lot of work. But hopefully at the end of the day, when everything would be done, that everybody would be, you know, feel pretty proud about the products, the work products that they've produced. That's just my opinion. You mentioned the performance measures maybe being set and agreed upon at the administrative level, or, and I might be alone on this, but I think that those performance measures should be known by the public. They should be known, reviewed and approved by the Board of Supervisors. So we just know, you know, what marks are we setting for ourselves? What are we going to try to achieve this next fiscal year? And are we going to be able to, you know, accomplish that or not? It's another way for the Board of Supervisors, who's elected by the people of Mojave County, to make sure that the citizens' priorities that put us in these chairs are aligning with the programs, the services, the performance measures that you guys are setting. If it's not a mandated program, it's just my opinion that it should probably be asked to be done by the Board of Supervisors first, because we're the ones in state statute that are supposed to say, here's what the priorities are, here's what the budget is, we have the power of the purse. And it doesn't, I just feel like there's more opportunities for us to align the citizens' priorities, you know, with maybe some of the administrative processes. When I go out into District 1, into rural areas, top thing I hear all the time is law enforcement, sheriff. We need more deputies. We need more of a physical presence in our rural communities in law enforcement. Second is roads. But that's a, that's a mandated service, roads, or not roads, but sheriff, right? Yet we still have this conflict where we can't do as much as we want, right? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Langenfelder. I certainly appreciate those comments. And I'm not trying to come before you and say, this is a lot of work. We don't want to do it. Please don't, please don't hear me saying that. I absolutely agree with your comments that it's a worthwhile process. I believe the decision was made several years ago to stop requesting that data because there wasn't, it wasn't apparent that much was being done with the data once it was collected.
May I ask why? Why was nothing done with it?
I don't have, I don't have an answer for it.
Is it because you didn't have clear performance measures to measure against it? I mean, are you collecting data and you just don't know what to do with it? I mean, I don't understand.
I'm, I'm not sure what the direction of the board was at the time. Supervisor Langenfelder.
I think when there's ambiguity, there's an opportunity to improve. That's what I think.
Comments or questions?
Got a member of the public that requested to speak. Jennifer Egan.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me address you on this. I've adjusted my notes, so I hope you bear with me. The reason I signed up to speak is because the language in the item was concerning to me. And some of the proposals from the board are concerning because it seems to be a very strong trend towards privatizing. And that's something that concerns me very much, though. Sorry. So I know that the metrics are very different for public and private things. And I personally, I don't want my government measured by something like, does it make money? Is it successful? And we had a great example, just talking about, sorry, the fairgrounds. We don't want it to make even, we don't need to make money, but we want to break even. But something like that is a really good investment in our community. And it brings us more than, say, money or rewards, because it does bring things like community. So those are things that when we're asking for the metrics on it, we should be asking those things too. And I, I think that we have a pretty good staff, because I see the very specific requirements for the people that are doing the jobs here. And really, some of the people that are on staff are very impressive with their work history and their knowledge from the things that they've studied. And I think you have exactly the right people to evaluate those programs already. So I, I heard what you said, and it doesn't sound as bad as I thought it was going to be. So thank you for putting it as like an idea and an opportunity. But I think you have the people to measure it right now. And so basically, that's all I wanted to say about it, except maybe just as an idea, maybe a sundown clause when these things are brought forward. Like a sundown clause, we'll evaluate it again in five years. So if that's something that might help, I hope it does. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Langenfelder.
I appreciate your comments. I just think it matters to, to publicly track, you know, set and track performance measures, things like that, because it does two things for our, our county and our city. I mean, I think it provides context over many years. I mean, you have a lot of turnover in government. So if you, if you track things and you're measuring them and you're making course corrections, it provides context for a program or a service over a long term. But I agree, it's not just money. You're, you're tracking outcomes. Are you hitting the outcomes that you're setting at the front? And if you're not, why aren't you? And if you're, can we do something to modify what we're, our goals are, what our performance measures are in order to achieve that outcome? That's what I'm saying. So thank you again.
Supervisor Bishop.
I just wanted to make a comment. I think we have some very talented folks that work for Mojave County in the various departments. Luke being one of them, our county manager being one of them. I think we, we hire competent people, the best that we can find. I think we, we can either trust their judgment and our county manager, but verify, or we can micromanage and, and, and not trust our, our staff and our county managers. So I, I think verification is important, but I think we need to let our people do their jobs and report to us and then make a decision based on the information that is provided to us. If, if we're not trusting that information, we can verify it.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Angus.
Correct me if I'm wrong Supervisor Langenfeld, but I don't think that you're talking about the actual work that, that our great employees do. You're talking about the direction that they're given on how to do that work. You know, so I don't think it's an indictment on our employees at all. It's just what has to come from us is, is the direction. So I'm looking forward to hearing what you want to do to go forward. My original comment was I just, I just don't want to do everything for the sake of it without having like clear direction. So I would suggest that we start with something that maybe you have concerns about, a department with their matrix on, on, you know, the, the non-mandated services. Because we've, like, we've talked about things like the homeless and all the grant stuff that, that comes up, and we'll be talking about grants in a second. And, and those kind of things that are kind of more easily done, more easily you can find out the answers instead of just doing everything and then looking for what you're looking for. I guess I'm saying that.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Langenfelder.
I appreciate the dialogue and the discussion. And if I may, I'd like to make a motion, but program as much flexibility into that motion as we can. As, as I stated again, Luke, our new financial services director, you just started. We had, Sam has, is still, you know, fairly new. I'd like to make a motion to give you guys maybe 60 days or before the next budget cycle starts, to meet together and perhaps come back with some ways which accomplish those three goals, which accomplish something with the performance measures, just some things that we could incorporate into our current process that we could, we could point to and say, look, as, as a county, you know, we're never going to be satisfied with our previous best. We, we think that there's always an opportunity to improve. We think there's always an opportunity to make sure that our citizens understand that our processes are clearly tied to their priorities. I mean, you understand what I'm saying. I mean, from listening to you talk, I think you get it. So I'd just like to make a motion within 60 days that staff brings back some ways in which this board can consider adopting as, as things we can incorporate into our budget process. That would be my motion.
I have a question.
Supervisor Johnson.
Is that just for non-mandated?
It could be for all programs. It really could. I, I did call out non-mandated. I mean, there are things that we have to do per, you know, per statute, mandated services. But I'll leave that up to you. I mean, certainly include non-mandated programs. But if you think that there's things that we could do to, for all, for all programs, that would be great too. Does that answer your question Supervisor?
Yes, ma'am. You've heard that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 60 Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had discussions before on, on these items that come up on grants. And I looked through, most of the grants that we get are all sorts of grants. And they all have the similar wording that seems to be bothering us. So I thought, bring it up. If we decide it's not something we want to do, then we won't do it. And, you know, whatever the feeling of the board is, it might save us time. Because we, you know, we got into the, what, we kicked back a $14,000 grant on the sheriff, I think. And then I think the bigger one was four million or up in the millions of dollars. So if we have a policy from the board, it would save people time from, you know, submitting these grant funds. It does take a lot of time for those things. That was just brought it up for discussion, see what the pleasure the board was.
Thank you Supervisor.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
Well, I kind of scratched my head a bit when I, when I saw that item on the agenda because, you know, I've been here now 10 years. And I'm going to say in the 10 years, we have accepted probably 98% of all the grants. We all understand what the grants do, where they come from. We've talked ad nauseam about, we don't like it. We send our money to Washington, they send it back, they dole it back with everybody taking their things. That's the system. We have nothing to do with it. But it seems since the COVID era that we have been looking at them a little bit more deeply forwarding for purpose and stuff like that. And the very few grants that we have said no to, you know, we had reasons. It's not like we just said, oh, we're not going to accept grants to like the all or nothing. So I have no problem the way we're doing. In fact, Supervisor Johnson, anytime there's a grant for the reach-out program, you take it off and you have your reasons. I respect that. And, you know, that, that is what a board, an elected board does. So I, I don't see why there was no problem to deal with a problem that really doesn't exist. Just our citizens come up, they have their own opinions, they get to speak on it. That's, that's the system. And they, they like to do that. They feel very strongly about it. But I, I don't think there's any problem. I don't think we have to do, you know, one way or the other, either accept them or don't accept them. I, I think we're doing fine.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
I guess in response to that, the, the difference is to me, we've been denying these, these couple because of language that's in the grant. And that language is in all these grants. And that's, if that's what the, the will the board is, that's fine with me. You know, but I just thought that would stop it. Because it bothers me, and that's just me personally, the picky to choose. And it's like, well, we like this grant, even though it has the same language, how do we vote to turn down a different one that has? But that was mine.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
For example, I think the last one that we denied was the ERAT money. And it wasn't about the money. I mean, it wasn't about the wording. It was about what we saw as the purpose of the, it was more philosophical. It really wasn't about the language. And I think we've been pretty good in talking about these and explaining why we, we don't, not just the language. There was one that was so egregious in its wording, and it was almost a parody of itself. And again, these are decisions that a board gets to make. And yes, the wording's been there. It seems that the wording has gone into hyperdrive with all these things. And now frankly, with a new administration of a different party persuasion that's going to be in the governor's office, I think we do have to look at these things a little bit more closely and, and do our jobs to discuss them as need be. But again, we, we accept 90, 98%, I'm going to say, of all the grants that are, we have whole departments that are grant-run.
Supervisor Bishop.
I, I just wanted to share my, my perception of this. It seems like we're denying some grants and approving others. But the ones we deny seem to be just to appease the few extreme political persons that are vocal here at our board meetings that hold those beliefs to the detriment of the vast majority of Mojave County residents that can, can benefit from some of these grants that we're turning down. So, you know, if people come and speak at the board meetings, it seems like we're a little more sympathetic because they're here in person and they're up at the podium. And, and it's, it's not necessarily the belief of all of our constituents, but it's the ones that are being heard that, that take the time to come and speak publicly. So we're here to represent all of our, our residents, not just the ones that show up.
Let's take some public comment. Jennifer Egan.
Thank you again. And thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Bishop. I've, I've worked on a few grants in my time. One successful, one not so successful. And one thing that I did learn from them is that they were not unvaluable, I guess, what you would say. Even though it wasn't successful in our outcome, what we were hoping for, the knowledge that we gained from it was very useful, especially in, it was an educational grant. But having been involved in a few grants, I've noticed that the language that is within them, and, and mind you, I haven't been on a grant in more than two years. So it may be, as you say, it may have gotten worse, some of the small print on it. But all of the requirements that I ever sought for it are to ensure that it is very equal to the people that are benefiting from it, or that it's open to everybody in the community. So I think the, the small print is very important. And I think Supervisor Bishop stated something that's very true. And it does bother me when I'm watching the, the, the public comments, because they do get And it does bother me when I'm watching the, the public comments, because they do get applause for them, and they seem like very, very popular opinions, but not so much. I mean, you guys got an applause line for, a line in a grant about the Uighurs in China, which I think, I think everybody on our board is compassionate, has a good heart, and knows that that's not a good thing. But we want to make sure that when we're spending government money, we want to do it in ethical way. And that is a big part of grants. I don't think it's a reason to turn them down. So I hope you'll keep looking at those. And if there is language that's objectionable, by all means, let's send them back and we can negotiate on. I think that would be a great thing, and it would benefit the community much more than just outright denying them. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Supervisor Angus.
Can I ask the speaker a question? So we didn't turn down the Uighurs, we just are asking questions if we see something we've never seen before. So you, you agree that we, as elected officials, have the right to speak, to speak on things like grants?
Even more so, I believe it's your duty.
Is our duty.
And I applaud you for doing it.
Thank you. Right. And the people who come and speak against it, they have a right as well.
They do.
Thank you.
But I think it's important that you remember, there's, there's many of us who can't come and speak very often. It's very hard to make, you know, to come down in the middle of the day. So they don't represent everyone. I was hoping I could present another side for you. And we want to take the ones that benefit us. Of course, we don't have to, we don't have to accept every grant. I understand that. But I hope we can take the ones that would benefit greatly. And not just because we get.
Thank you.
Applause. And I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I believe the Uighurs is the cause, as you're currently, I remember in the legislature voting to not do business with the nation of Sudan, when the, when northern Sudan was enslaving the southern Sudanese people and the animus that lived in the Nuba Mountains. That's just another, the blanket statement that we don't do business with people who use slaves would probably benefit us better than picking out a particular group that's being enslaved. We shouldn't do business with China, because they enslave other, it's not just the Uighurs that they enslave. But back to grants. Actually, I'd be happy if they got rid of grants. Effectively, the federal government overtaxes us so that they can control our actions by giving us our own, making us beg for our own money and stringing that money up so that we can only use it the way they want us to use it. How about this, quit overtaxing me, leave the money in the local communities, and then we'll decide what we do with the money locally rather than from Washington. But since I'm not in Congress, I don't have an opportunity to work on that project. Supervisor Johnson.
And doesn't seem to be any kind of consensus up here, so we'll just let it die.
And we'll take no action on that? Number 61, Director Lutowski.
Chairman Gould, members of the board, this item considers a previous District Four ARPA allocation for the improvement and establishment of a new well three, serving the Golden Valley Improvement District water system. What has happened is staff through board direction has attempted a drilling of a well three. Our contractor was unsuccessful, and as a result, we are in a position where we have to attempt a redrill of well number three. Costs have ensued. We currently have a, an estimate upwards of 1.5 billion, 1.5 million dollars to complete this project. And as a result, we are asking the board's consideration to reappropriate 750,912 from the District Four ARPA fund for equipping this well. I'm speaking of the pump and motor. Transfer those funds to enable us to put towards the drilling of this particular well.
Questions for Director Lutowski.
Supervisor Bishop. I don't have any questions, but this is within my district and part of the ARPA funds. And I would like to make a motion that we authorize this District Four projects for the amount not to exceed 750,912 to construct a new well to satisfy the water district demands.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Number 62, County Manager.
Sit Chairman, Board Members. The Board of Supervisors has had multiple discussions related to the constables and the forms and standardizing those forms and ensuring that they're leachable to the board members, and directed staff to follow up. That's what this item is for, understanding that we have new constables that will be taken their role and job duties, and that we're approaching a new year. The intent here is to achieve that baseline, basically, is to have a, is to require, sorry, the Mojave County constables to use the most recently adopted standardized daily activity. And just, those are adopted by the Arizona Constable Association, ask the constables to complete them accurately, completely, and be typed. Have had discussion in preparation for this board meeting with both the clerk of the board and attorney Esplin to provide them training along with a template that they can look at and use and follow. And we hope that this will, once and for all, address that need and, and provide the, the constables the training needed and the support to complete those forms, submit them to the clerk of the board, so when asked for information, she would have, she would have that information available to any board member who may ask or to report to the board in general. So it's really intended to act on the board previous direction and clean it up once and for all. We think it's process improvement, and we hope you see it as such. And with approval today, we have time to set up the training and provide the support, so it will be all in place when the constables, the new ones are sworn in, and the existing ones will have access to that training and to the support as well.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Chairman Gould, just so that the board is aware, I already have some of the training set up. We do have current constables that are pretty close to doing what we're asking them to do. Just as a note, we do have one that refuses to comply at all at this time. So we will once again request that he follows this directive, but he is the one at this time that we have the most trouble with.
Chairman Gould.
You've heard that motion, any further discussion, Supervisor Bishop?
I'd like to ask the county attorney, should this not be complied with? Do we have any manner of enforcement? Can we, can we withhold reimbursement payment if a constable just pushes back and says they will not comply?
Supervisor Bishop, that's a great question. I don't have the answer right now, but I can assure you, we would take whatever measures necessary that we would, that would be allowed by law in order to enforce it. Absolutely. Whatever we can do to ensure that it, it is complied with, we can, we'll take, or we will evaluate those actions and see what we can do.
Including withholding the reimbursement.
If that's allowed by law, then we would look into that, absolutely. I'd have to evaluate it case by case, but if that's the case, then we would look into that, certainly.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
We have that policy now. If we file, if we submit our forms to finance and they don't meet their criteria, they withhold our money until we get it done, so I don't think that'll be a problem.
Hey, well, I appreciate staff putting, putting this together and the clerk of the board providing training so that there is no question as to what is required to, to submit for mileage reimbursement. So I make a motion that we approve.
We already got a motion and a second.
And a second. I will vote aye.
Double motion, man. Double plus motion. County Manager, are these cell phone based tablets? Are they going to be on Wi-Fi? And who's paying for the service? I guess we are.
Question answered.
I believe at present time, they're, they're computer based applications, because every constable has a county provided computer. And I, I would venture and say they each have a phone as well that is county provided. So if there is a desire to transfer or expand that to make it, to make it an application on a phone, I'm sure we can work with our IT department to, to provide that.
My question was more, who's, if their, if their device is going to be cell phone based, then we're going to have to pay for a cell phone service for that device? But if that, if the intent is they have that device Wi-Fi only?
Chairman Gould.
And we won't have to pay for the cell phone?
Chairman Gould, it is an Excel spreadsheet. So it's, it's like, on your computer, you open up your computer, it's an express, Excel spreadsheet. So anything you can open that on, you can fill it out.
Earlier in the testimony, the county manager mentioned that we were purchasing them tablets and giving them tablets to work on, to do the report on.
Chairman Gould, I don't know about that, but I can tell you, the form that they're required to fill out is an Excel spreadsheet, and they can email it to me.
Okay. I thought I heard the county manager say we were providing them with tablets.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I honestly, if I led you to believe that, it was not my intent. I don't, I didn't intend to say.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. You've heard that motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Chairman Gould.
Yes.
Before we recess, this is our last meeting of the year. I want to wish everybody, staff, community, very happy holiday season, Christmas, Hanukkah, and a very happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you for that, Supervisor. Did we vote?
This is when I turn on my.
I just haven't called it as. I've totally lost control. The ayes have it. And with that, very adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Yep, screw it up on the last one.